I'd like to call it over the regular meeting for, excuse me, Thursday, May 8th, 2025. Please silence your cell phones and if you have an item to speak on, please fill out a blue slip there in the back and get it to one of the ladies up here before the item comes up. All right, we're going to do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Bowers.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Your word says in Proverbs that anyone that comes to you looking for wisdom is shall freely be given. We're coming to you asking for wisdom and guidance as we help navigate these decisions in what's best for the parish and may it be pleasing in your sight. We also lift up the newly elected Pope, Pope Leo, to you, Father, and pray that you help guide him, give him wisdom, and protect him and give him strength for when the enemy comes. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Roll call, please, Ms. Wallace.
Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Ms. Eason?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markantel?
Here.
Mr. Quinn is unable to attend. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelling?
Here.
President Barris?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to welcome our deputies. Man, those greens look good. I kind of double, I had to do a double take, man, but that looks sharp. All right.
So, item one, we're going to hold a public hearing at 5:45 PM ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said property should not be condemned. We're going to go to, again, 5:45. We have a couple of upcoming agenda items that may push us into that time, but we'll just, we'll play it by ear. Item 2A, approve an application for a liquor and beer permit for LCLA Investor Group LLC, DBA Jellystone Park, Lake Charles, 4200 Luke Powers Road, Lake Charles. I have a motion by Mr. Smith to approve and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 2B, approve the following. One, approve an application for a liquor and beer permit for Caddyshack Ice House LLC, DBA The Shack, 7793 Lake Street, Lake Charles. Two, adopt a resolution approving the submittal to Louisiana Alcohol and Tobacco Control, a petition to oppose issuance of an alcohol beverage permit for Caddyshack Ice House LLC, DBA Caddyshack, 7795 Lake Street, Lake Charles. Move to discuss. Second. Okay, we've got a motion to discuss by Mr. Landry. Mr. McGuire, would you like to lay a few?
Just a bit of background, a couple of different things, and a bit of a history that kind of got us here. So, we wanted to let everybody know a little bit about the history, where we are, and answer any questions before you start the discussion. So, your applicant for this matter is going to be the same. And anytime I refer to applicant, it is the Caddyshack Ice House LLC. This started back in 2024. So, that same applicant requested an application for liquor and beer permit at an address of 7795 Lake Street. That was granted in 2024 last year. They then received their permit from the state after that, and they were licensed as a restaurant by the state. And they began operating there and selling food and selling liquor. In 2025, the state came in to investigate whether or not the entity qualified as a restaurant. For the state permit, if you're a restaurant, you should have more than 50% sales in food compared to alcohol. So, they came in, they did a survey. You have in your attachments a report from the state investigator, and they found that the alcohol sales far outweighed the food sales. So, for that reason, the state did not renew its application for the applicant at 7795, and that just, that went away. So, there was no active license, and there's no active license right now. What the applicant has to do is to reapply to the state, and they've done that, to request a new permit as a bar. We have a zoning ordinance that says that you can't have a bar within 300 feet of a residence. So, the existing address of 7795 is within 300 feet of at least one residence, and you have to have the underlying local beer and liquor permit before you can apply to the state to get theirs. So, they would not qualify for the local one. In 2025, and a couple of months ago, they requested a building permit to separate the existing 7795 address. That has now been done. A wall has been put up, it has been divided, a new address has been issued. So, there are now two addresses at the former location that was one address. Those two addresses are 7795, the old address, and 7793, the new address. Your item 2B1 is the new application by the same applicant, the same entity, for a liquor and beer permit, the parish permit, for 7793 Lake Street. And that's what you have to consider tonight. The 2B1 is to consider the resolution that we would submit something to the State of Louisiana Alcohol and Tobacco Control Board regarding the current application before them. So, that application is by the same entity, but it's for the address of 7795, the old address. There's still a current local, our, permit for alcohol and beer that's issued. That will renew in November of this year, so it's still valid right now. And that's a pending application with the state. That's the entity that's now, because it was divided more than 300 feet from the residence. And the state will have to issue a new alcohol permit for that entity as a bar, because that's what's being applied for. You have the option individually, as an elected official, or as a group, the police jury, to oppose that. And the item that you have 2B2 is the item for you to consider if you want to oppose it or not oppose it as the entire group. Because the entity is the same in all applications, and because the location is the same in both applications, it is the opinion of council that you can consider the history of this location and this applicant in making your decisions tonight on these two agenda items. So, if there's any questions, happy to answer those now. I know that there's going to be some presentations on both sides, both for and against.
Okay, I understand that we have a video that was submitted. Just go ahead and, I think it may, I have not seen it, so we're all going to see it for the first time right now, so it may shed a little light on why we're here this evening on this matter. If our media guys can queue that up and... Okay, thank you. So, we have some blue cards.
Hey, Mr. President, I think you have three blue cards in front of you. One from Adam Johnson, who's here on behalf of the applicant. Adam's going to get a little more time, because there were some owners who put blue cards in, but told me prior to the meeting they're ceding their time to Adam.
Okay.
So, I know we have two in opposition, so the timeframe we talked about was Adam's going to take about six minutes, and then two opposition, those speakers will get three minutes each.
Okay, thank you. So, I'd like to call Mr. Adam Johnson, please. State your name and address for our record, please, sir.
Sure. Adam Johnson, here. I have the Johnson firm, I have the owners of Caddyshack. My address is 1419 Ryan Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70601. Boy, I didn't plan on speaking right after that video. I didn't see that in the agenda, you know, that attached, you know, video. But in any event, the music and all. So, I'm here on behalf of the owners, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Who the owners are, they're a group of private business owners, had an idea to sort of rehab a local business that has been in and out of existence, struggling for several years. Owners are local, live here, raise their families here. Admittedly, the speed of success of the business surprised even us. People in Lake Charles are looking for something to do at night. The golf aspect to putters has always made it very, very unique, and so people sort of flocked to it, and it became sort of overnight very, very, very popular. And that's a, that could be a blessing, but it's also a difficulty when you have neighbors close by, and it's sort of difficult to control, as maybe you've seen, albeit with eerie music over the top of it. As issues were brought to our attention, we did everything we could to address them extremely quickly. We hired private security when that issue was raised. We hired additional staff to model the parking lot and any litter associated with saying when we received a complaint with that. We met with leaders to discuss complaints regarding parking, and as soon as those were raised, we immediately began construction on a new parking lot until we received a cease and desist letter from the airport, which will be resolved, hopefully, by you guys' decision tonight. As we grew, we were told that we needed to change our classification. You heard Mr. McGuire speak on that briefly. We did so with the ATC, we reapplied with the ATC. We were told by the parish that to do so and change our local license, we would need to make changes to comply with zoning ordinances for the parish. We did that at significant expense. We removed $100,000 putting green to make the change. Were issued split addresses, all right, to accommodate the change. We built a $25,000 wall, we incurred numerous additional expenses, but we got it done, and we were told if we did so, we could do so, get the approval, and continue operating without having to close our doors. ATC issues an exemption to us for us to continue operating past March 31st. The exemption had a typo in it. It said Marina, not a golf exemption. And when we called back, we brought that to their attention, they said, hey, you got a problem with the police jury, put on the brakes. So, that's been stalled, and so now we are here. And vote one is to deny our application, and vote two, obviously, is to vote to, I guess, formally object to the ATC license, which has already been placed on hold from apparently some sort of objection. And essentially what that will do is what it, and what it already has done, is essentially shut us down and keep us from running, even under our current license, which, as Mr. McGuire mentioned, is good until December 31st or November of 2025. To be candid with you all, this, it kind of feels like more of a revocation than an application process, especially given the agenda items. Feels like we're getting, and I'm not necessarily complaining, I suppose, but it feels like we're getting all the cost of the application, but none of the rights associated with revocation. There's a process, and it sort of feels like what we're saying is, is in the opinion of council, we can consider their past conduct. This isn't a question about whether or not we qualify for the application. We've done everything the parish asked us to do, we've spent money, we've relied on those representations, and then that was sort of stalled, and so now that we're here, you know, today. Our remedy, if we lose in front of you guys, is to, you know, go to the courts. That is not our desire. We desire to work with our government, with our neighbors, and to try and reach a reasonable compromise, because that's what we're commanded to do, is to resist the courts. Our remedy is to take your, if the decision is negative, to take it to the district court. They consider it de novo, which is from the beginning, and if we were to win, I feel like it would waste more time and more money, and the people that we have in this room, that we could sit down, we could put an agreement in writing, we can agree on reasonable hours, and we could solve this the old-fashioned way, which is just people trying to work together and keep a, obviously, a very attractive, popular business open, but do so with respect for the neighbors across the street. It is a, it is a situation that requires attention, but we want to, we want to work together. As for the airport, I notice there's an airport contract in the addendum. I've spoke with some of you, and some of you have indicated that, you know, it might be the, the airport might be the issue. The airport is not the issue. Our addendum to our contract gives us the right to operate as a bar, it's spelled out in black and white. That is not an issue. If we're able to move forward and you guys vote in our favor, then, and I think that's what should happen, we should vote to grant the application, we should deny the petition to oppose. You should let us get the application that we qualified for, that we relied on the advice and spent money in support of that. I assure you that we would, we would not have removed that $100,000 putting green, spent all the money that we did, if we thought we were only earning the right to apply. I promise you, that's not how private business thinks, that's not how they operate. And so, what we want is an opportunity to sit down at the table, agree on terms, put it in writing, make it enforceable, and balance the interests here that are competing against one another, and I'd certainly appreciate the opportunity to do that. If you don't do, that opportunity will not be available to us unless we, if you vote against us, and we have to take it to the next level. And we will have just wasted time, in my opinion, in the meantime. We want to work with our neighbors, and I please ask that you give us the opportunity to do that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. And my owners are here to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Landry?
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Questions, then.
His name is Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, yes.
Here, here's the problem. This has been going on for months, and you want to work with us now.
Oh, no, I contacted you a couple of weeks ago as soon as I got to call on the case, and your attorneys can verify that.
I'm not talking about two weeks, I'm talking about this problem's gone on for months, and you talk about, well, they hired security. Well, the security they hired evidently wasn't doing a very good job, because, I mean, it's like the Wild West out there. Maybe these people are confused, some of them. The gun range is actually on Wardline Road, it's not on Lake Street, where the airplanes are. All they had to do is hire the sheriff's department several, several months ago, but I think they chose not to because of the cost.
Well, I, I'll tell you...
I don't know if that's correct or not, but, you know, if I'm hiring a private security company and that's not working, and my parking lot continues to be out of control, I think I'm going to do something different, and I'm going to hire the sheriff's department and those off-duty deputies that are available.
Sure. Well, I can, I can tell you that, I don't know, I wasn't representing them at the time that that decision was made. What I can tell you is this costs to do factor into how you run a business, just generally speaking, and I think we all know that, and that's common sense. What I'm telling you is, is that if that fixes the issue, my owners are ready and willing to do that. As, in terms of, when I got involved in this case, I reached out, and that's the first thing that I wanted to do, was discuss what the police jury's concerns were, sit down, see if we can try to, you know, work something out, and put it in writing and make it enforceable. But as far as months, this has gone on for months, that's what I kind of meant by running the business. When you get, when you're running the business, sometimes, you know, it's a, and you're successful, and you have a popular location, sometimes that's difficult to manage. And I guess what we're looking for is government that will work with us and not try and cancel us. I assure you, nobody freaks out more if they hear, you know, gunshots than a business owner. I promise you that much.
Well, I will inform you, because this is before you were hired, that we met with the owners here several months ago with some staff members and some police jurors, and we told them what needed to happen. I mean, you wouldn't want to live across the street from what you just saw, there is no way that you would.
Well, would I want, you're saying I wouldn't want to live across the street from there?
Well, I mean, I would. I mean, nobody wants to hear all that kind of noise at 3:00 in the morning.
To be clear, I saw a video, and I understand there appears to be, you know, some activity across the street, but the video I saw was, had eerie music playing behind it, was, it looked like professionally, you know, it was professionally prepared. What I'm suggesting is, all right, what I'm suggesting is, is this, what I'm suggesting is, is that...
Please refrain in the audience.
Sometimes it doesn't seem like months when you're in the process of running a business and you're trying to manage being successful. What I'm suggesting is, if you believe that the sheriff's office will solve the problem, then we're fully committed to solving that problem, and I think our actions have proved that. When things were brought to our attention, we did hire private security. Maybe we didn't hire the right security, but we took action. The parking lot was designed to prevent the parking issue. From what I understand, they've called multiple times, I think, to the sheriff's office to have cars towed and things like that, and it just hasn't been followed up on. So, it seems to me like this is a solvable problem. This is not to the point to where we need to tell a business. And it's not a good precedent for the airport as well, because I think they, they have other properties they want to lease, and so us working together could benefit them, and I think it's just possible to work together, that's all. I think we can solve it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that.
Mr. Abshire?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Sure, I'm going to grab my water. I mean, you don't just walk away from the podium.
What?
You don't just walk away from the podium when you're asked questions. So, tell me, how many golfers, how many golfers are there at 3:00 in the morning?
Um, man, I can't answer that question, I'm sorry, Brian.
There's none.
Okay.
There's none after dark.
Okay.
It's a bar, and I would not want to live across the street from it. Your brother is my neighbor, I know he's not going to want to live across the street from it. So, this has gotten completely out of hand, and in my opinion, there's no business for that business where it's at. So, I yield back, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Abshire.
Well, yeah, the questions were rhetorical.
We have speakers in opposition.
We do have speakers in opposition.
Can I address that just briefly, if that's okay? If everyone, I'm sorry, and I didn't mean to, if everyone were agree on hours of operation for this business to operate, and we put that in writing and said, hey, guys, if, we're going to grant you the application that you qualify for, because you did all these things to comply with the regulations that we told you had to meet, and, and they did that, and we put it in writing and said, hey, you can't operate past this time of day, or, you know, this, this hour of night, these are the conditions, and everybody agreed on it and said, hey, and if you don't do this, you're subject to immediate revocation, and all, you don't get a hearing, you're subject to immediate revocation. That is legal to do, would allow this business the opportunity to continue to operate and, in truth, save significant investment they've put into a property without just completely being sort of canceled under the law, and I think that would, we'd like the opportunity to satisfy those concerns. That's, I guess that's what I'm asking for, because I think we can get to a point to where people don't mind living across the street from it at all, and that's including my brother.
Ms. Eason?
I would just reiterate some of what Chris said, that when we met with those business owners, they presented a plan, it sounded like it would work. We're pro-business, we like business, and so we gave them a chance to fix it, and obviously it didn't get fixed. And while we support business in Calcrash Parish, it has to be a good fit for all stakeholders, for the location as well as people around it and businesses around it. So, by separating the restaurant from the bar... So by separating the restaurant from the bar, so that the bar can sell more alcohol, we're only increasing the likelihood of more problems. So in short, Caddyshack has become a nightclub, a nightclub on airport property, which is not how it was intended when the airport leased to the, to the Caddyshack. So it's become a nightport, I mean, a nightclub on airport property with a neighborhood right across the street. And so it's, if we approve this alcohol permit for a full-fledged bar, which has become a nightclub, we, we're violating our responsibility to other stakeholders, the residents that live there, and the airport, which is funded with public money, and they're, they're operating on airport property, causing a lot of trouble on airport property. So how do we resolve that?
Yeah, I think you can resolve that with hours of, an hours of operation agreement. I think you also need to understand the addendum that was signed when Caddyshack took over the lease from the airport specifically allows them to operate as a bar. So the idea that that wasn't contemplated, the terms of the contract specifically allow them in the addendum to operate as a bar, so that was definitely contemplated, there's no doubt about that. What I'm saying is, is that business has gotten out of control, it sounds like, Ms. Eason, and so my, my concern is that I think when you open, when you close, additional parking, all of that can solve the problems. As far as the previous meeting's concerned, what it, it sounds like is, is that we left that meeting immediately, there were sort of no parking signs placed out, I think, on the road, there was private security hired, and then we couldn't get the sheriff to come out and tow the vehicles, because we got no problem with vehicles, you know, that are parked incorrectly being towed, that's, that's not our, that's not our issue. And to solve that problem, we immediately started building, in good faith, an expansion of our parking lot. But if you tell us, hey, look, if y'all agree to close at this time, you agree, you know, to this on Friday and Saturday, during the weekday, you can't go past here, then I think that we can agree to a resolution of the issue without, you know, canceling the business through the application process, is all I'm saying. And if we don't meet that, if we don't, you know, agree to abide by that agreement, then there's, there's an agreement we can reach that says, hey, you're automatically subject to revocation. I don't think, that first meeting, I think everybody left with good intentions, I just think that the way it was executed maybe wasn't, you know, it wasn't agreed, I don't think anybody put anything to paper and, and put it down in writing, and so as a result, I think some confusion resulted, and we, you know, we want the opportunity to make that right, and that, and that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, or are you finished, Ms. Eason?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eason, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a concern that I think is shared by most of us here, and that concern is, you're talking about a place where there are 70, 70, seven zero callouts. You, I don't know how you fix that by the things you're suggesting here. When I say callouts, the sheriff's department was called. As a result of those 70 callouts, there were seven arrests made, that's before we get into all of the stuff we just saw here on the video. I don't know that this can be saved. I don't know if I live near it, I'm satisfied at all by the things you suggest. I still don't get sleep after 3:00 in the morning, and I'm 80 years old. I've got issues, big issues, that don't seem to be being addressed. We had the meeting with the gentleman who owned the place, there were things given to him as far as instructions, if you do this, this, and this, we'll talk. This, this, and this never occurred, and we're still talking, but we're not solving. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay, I have a couple of folks in opposition. Mr. Toby Hagan? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Toby Hagan, I live at 7810 Lake Street. First off, thank you all for giving me time. Our neighborhood has always been very safe, quiet and peaceful area, up until the arrival of Caddyshack Ice House. Caddyshack actually has had 152 called-in complaints to the sheriff's department from January 1st to 2024 until now, violating the laws and parish ordinance that were put in place to keep our neighborhoods safe, quiet, and peaceful. As I understand it, Caddyshack Ice House is also trying to do business as the shack. It's a different name, same owners, same building, same property, and will be the same business as usual. I feel as though Caddyshack thinks that they are above any rules or laws. We, as well as others, have given them every opportunity to correct their lawless behavior, and they only tell lies and do nothing. I would like for each of you to place yourselves in our shoes for one moment and pretend this is your home, your safe space, your place of peace and solitude. You are the one in charge of making sure that all of these things are in place for your elderly mothers, your wife, your family. The question to ask yourself, what would I do? You've had a long, exhausting week, you're looking forward to spending the weekend relaxing with your children, your grandchildren, your family. Starting Thursday night, then Friday night, Saturday night, until 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, your walls and windows are shaken from the outdoor DJs, amplified bass, foul-mouthed rap music blaring from their speakers, cars are lined up along Lake Street blocking your driveway, in the no-parking areas that y'all put in place for us, and we appreciate that, booming their radios, throwing F-bombs, gunshots, hollering and screaming, underage kids drinking alcohol, beer bottles lining your yard and inside of your mailbox, you're actually watching drug deals in their parking lot. I have to try and sleep in my recliner with earplugs in my ears and my pistol on my side to feel safe enough to protect my family and get any sleep at all in my own home. This is every single weekend at our house. Please vote from that point of view and ask yourself, what would I do? My family and I beg you to vote no to issuing a liquor license to the shack. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all have any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Jim Klepsick. Please, your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Jim Klepsick, I live at 1084 Franklin Road, that's one road over from Lake, about a quarter mile away, and nobody wants to control what a business can do on their property. Problem is, there's two things that leave their property. One is sound, noise, and the other is gunfire. So a quarter mile away, I have to listen to the sound, and I'm subject to the gunfire. And I don't think that, and, and the traffic, I don't have the traffic issue, I'm one street over, but if the issues are, are noise, gunfire, and traffic, I don't see change in the hours would help. There's, there's no hour in the day that those things are acceptable. Any questions?
No, thank you.
On one, on 2B1, I would make a motion to deny the permit.
Okay, so on item 2B1, we have a motion by Mr. Landry to deny, and a second by Mr. Stelly to do the same. We'll, we'll do a roll call vote, which-
Start with the As, Mr. President.
Okay.
Mr. Abshar?
Let me clarify, a vote on 2B1, correct?
Yes, sir.
The vote no would be to deny approval?
Unfortunately, no, a, a motion to deny is on the floor, so if you agree with the motion, it would be a yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Andropov?
Yes.
Mr. Barti?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Ms. Eason?
Yes.
Mr. Guillory?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Markantel?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stelly?
Yes.
It is 13 in favor and none against, therefore the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, on 2B2, I would like to make a motion to oppose-
Adopt.
-the submittal.
Second.
I'm sorry, can we just-
So we're making a motion to adopt, we're, the resolution is to oppose?
Well, the petition is to oppose, is what it says, yes.
So-
To adopt a resolution of-
Correct.
Issue, it's okay.
Unfortunately, we apologize, the-
Yes, we know.
Yeah.
Poor, poor Algie Bro would be having heck tonight, I promise you.
So I believe that the motion would be to adopt the resolution in opposition. And there was a second?
Got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? We can do a roll call again, please?
Reverse roll call.
Reverse roll call, and-
And the motion is to approve.
Right.
Yes, vote would be to adopt a resolution. Right. Mr. Stelly?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Markantel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Guillory?
Yes.
Ms. Eason?
Yes.
Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Barti?
Yes.
Mr. Andropov?
Yes.
Mr. Abshar?
Yes.
The vote is 13 in favor, zero against, therefore the motion to approve carries.
Okay, thank you, item secretary. All right, we need our, go back to our hearing item, which is hold a public hearing, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties-
Maybe a brief recess while we clear out here for a second.
All right, item 1A, 1488 Highway 171 Moss Bluff. Got a motion to condemn by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Lewis, is there anyone from the, we have no cards, correct?
Correct.
We have no cards. So any discussion, any question that item carries? 1B, 325 U-Wind Road, Moss Bluff. A motion to condemn by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Eason, any, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 1C, 1305 Laverne Road, Moss Bluff. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Eason. Anyone to speak on this item? Hearing none, any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 1D, 1449 Laverne Road, Moss Bluff. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Eason. Anyone here to speak? Any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 1E, 4001, 4,001 Ellis Street, Lake Charles. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Eason.
It don't matter.
Oh, Burley, Burley had that motion. You still get the second. Anyone to speak on this? Any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 1F, 117 Cookie Lane, Lake Charles. Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Bowers. Anyone here to speak on that? Any questions? Any discussion? You?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're not going to like this, but back on 1D, was that that pink-looking house? That one? Come on now, I could fix that porch, and I'm not even a carpenter. I hope there's something else wrong with that house than that. Please, you know, is there any other pictures? Mr. President, we've already acted on that.
We voted on that point, I ought to move on.
And I was on the prevailing side, I can question it. Okay, that's good. But look, when you only showed the good one, I mean, I don't want people condemning a house that there's nothing wrong with.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, our, our, our guys, they've been pretty, they're batting a thousand in my books, I don't think they've led us astray any time before.
Every now and then, one.
So back to Cookie Lane. No, we did, we did Cookie Lane?
Yeah, Cookie Lane, we're on 1G.
All right, 1G, 7645 Spec Drive, Lake Charles. Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Stelly. Any question? Any discussion that item carries? 228 West Aveir Road, Lake Charles. Got a motion by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second by Ms. Eason. Any questions? Any discussion that item carries? Was it 1I, 420 Highway 3256, Lake Charles? I've got a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by-
Second.
And Ms. Eason. Y'all are going to see a trend, we're going to do this a couple more times. Any question? Any discussion that item carries? 174 Ernie Benoit Street, Lake Charles. Motion to Mr. Stelly, and second by Mr. Smith. Any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 1K, 207 Orange Street, Dequincy. Motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Burley. Any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 1L, 3506 Pine Knolls Street, Sulphur.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Burley. Any questions? Any discussion that item carries? 1M, 38, excuse me, 787 Majestic Oak Drive, Sulphur. Motion by Mr. Andropov and a second by Mr. Hayes.
Mr. President, I believe someone had some discussion in the audience.
Okay, what, what item is that? We don't have a blue card.
1L.
1L. Y'all weren't here when I announced for the blue cards? Go ahead and come up to the podium. State your name and address.
I'm Floyd Christopher Esprit, and the address we're speaking of is 3506 Pine Knolls.
Okay.
Now, the damages, and it said it was inhabitable, there were some pretty bad hurricane issues and for months, you know, I'm a fixed income disability, so I used that money as much as I could, as I married into the family, to save their home. And everything throughout most of this time, we've cleaned the property, and there are new pictures, and what's left now is, I'm also electrician, what's left now is turn the power on. We have utilities there, and it needed a little siding, a window, and some paint. There's no leaks in that ceiling, right there, that's where the window needs to be, and there's some cosmetics that need to repair on that side, but the house is not falling, there's no leaks in the roofs, it's, we just need a little time to finish this up, just a little more time.
Mr. Markantel? Sir, do you have an active permit from the parish to do all this work?
Yes, I do. I do have a permit, they, for most of the time that we used, there were downed trees, and we were at it about, well, personally, right at about $16,000 in cleaning the property. The grass was everywhere, because it's a large property and the trees were down, and it was a single- it was a single mother that couldn't take care of it. So once I married into the family, I put everything I had into it to get it where it's at.
I understand that 2023, there's been permits issued, nothing was done, new permits were issued, nothing was done, new permits issued.
No, sir.
Since 2023, we've been dealing with this.
There, there was, I'm sorry, there was only one permit. We did all the go-at-work, down trees, I have the pictures and everything to show, and then we got a letter that said, pull the permit or we're gonna tear it down. We had the permit pulled, and shortly after that, we, most of the money was spent there, we spent over five grand on just, one day we cut the grass, three days later, a contractor come out and picked up the burn pile and the taxes went up to $3,000. So it took everything that we had. So at the last minute, it was like, okay, let's look at the house. The inspectors came out and they said, hey, you need to close it up, it's unsafe. So we abide by everything they asked for, step by step. I have every picture to show for it, and start selling personal belongings just to save it so that, so that the family can have a family home, you know, still exists. If it wasn't...
How are you doing the work if it's being deemed unsafe by the parish?
That's because I towed down the unsafe parts and I have pictures to show. They're all up the front, they had a bad contractor, and all the front had leaky roofs, the ceiling would fall, all that was torn out. I actually sold personal belongings to get a crew of guys to come out and help me take out everything. All of that on the ground, that's all rotten. Put a new door in the front right there. You see, the only thing left now, yeah, all of that's been taken out. I've had over six dumpsters of trash come in and out of there.
Well, now, I can tell you now, all that trash is still there, because I went there yesterday.
Oh, no, there's new trash now, and you're correct.
There's a lot of trash in front there.
Yes.
Shows where there was a structure that was destroyed by the storm and knocked down, that's laying there.
That's my destruction, to you.
So what, how long do you think it would take you to correct all this? Because I'm gonna tell you, neighbors and all, you know, they've been looking at it for five years.
Okay.
They continue to look, but I mean, if you've been pulling permits since 2023...
It's only been one, only one permit to work on the structure.
That's what I'm saying, though, that was two years ago.
Right, that, this is, this is the deal. Everything that we've done and the money was spent and the time that was spent there was strictly to take trees out. That's, that's all right here. Pictures of every step of the way, just trees, debris, trash. When I got into it, I know I got into this, but when I got into it, I had it removed by dumpsters after dumpsters and got the yard to where you can cut it with a lawnmower. And then the permit came about and we got to this point. The house is wired and ready to pull inspection and have the lights turned on now. We've wired everything up, and just that one side of that wall needs to be permanent and, and get that roof together and we'd be okay on it. Just need a little time.
Mr. Robinson, have you looked at this house, sir? Did you come up to the podium, please?
I'm sorry.
So, this house is ready, apparently, if it's electric, it's going to be moved into?
Well, I'm the one who took the photographs about two weeks ago, and in my opinion, it's not ready for occupancy.
So, so, sir, give me a time that you think you can get this done, because apparently it's not ready yet. You're not gonna get issued a permit to occupy.
No, no, I understand. It needs more work. It does need more work.
I mean, how much more time? It's been a long time.
I would say at the most four months. I'm working off, I have COPD, all I'm working off is my social security, and, and that's, that's maximum. And I'm out here basically doing it myself and sold everything I got just to save it, and at this point, I would lose it all. You know, that's where we at. I would lose everything, just, and, and I know, I wouldn't invest in something like that if I didn't think it was possible. Before I came down with, with my problem, I had, I was a contractor, and I've, I've wired a lot of homes, you guys, sure you guys know, and, and that's what I did, electrical and, and building. I can do it in, in, in that small bit of time.
Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir.
What do you think, sir? Should, should we give additional time in your opinion from your department, or?
Mr. Markentale, I, I don't know if I would give him four months.
No, he's not gonna, no, I'm not gonna give him four months.
I think he would probably give him less time than that, but I can tell you that we've tried to work with him a few, you know, for many months. In fact, he called today and I tried to call him back and I couldn't get through because his phone is not, the voicemail didn't set up, and I tried to call another number, apparently of Patricia Esprit.
Yes, so that's my wife, she's there.
And that, that voicemail was, the mailbox was full too. So it's hard for us to be in contact with him, to tell him exactly what he needs to do, because we're, and we've been trying, unless he calls us and asks us and we tell him, it's hard for us to get in touch with him. So I don't know how he's gonna do that, but he needs to get in touch with us so we can guide him through this process, because you're right, the neighbors out there, they, they have been calling.
Yes, I've been getting those.
And, and I'm sure you have, and so it's not fair to those neighbors, because if you go, if you go down that road, most all of those neighbors are keeping their properties up. And if they had hurricane damage, they, they corrected. And so, and I understand, I mean, I understand if somebody's on a fixed income or whatever, but it's gotta get done.
Right.
And furthermore, the permit has expired, so he's gonna have to renew his permit and get it up to speed. So that's another issue that we need to get done. And I think it's a, the communication has been on our part, we've been committed, but we haven't, you know, there hasn't been a reciprocal communication.
Sir, I'll tell you what I'm, I'm gonna make a motion for.
First, we have to rescind, because we ain't voted.
Right.
So we got a motion to rescind the...
The condemnation.
The condemnation.
I'll second.
By Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions on that? We're good on that, so we're gonna...
Make a new motion to extend 60 days, but you have to clear your phones, because if you, if, if we cannot correspond with you...
Yes, sir.
Then, then there's nothing past 60 days.
I understand.
Second.
So we got a motion to defer for 60 days by Mr. Markentale and a second, Mr. Stelly. And, all right, any questions? Mr. Andropont?
My, my question was, and it was gonna be to Mr. Crane about an active permit, and you answered it about it expired. So again, to Mr. Crane's point, you need to get with his office...
Okay.
For the permit, and, you know, I'm willing to vote to certainly give you that time.
Yes, sir.
But certainly get your paperwork in order and get a proper permit.
We'll do that immediately. Yes, sir. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Andropont. Mr. Smith?
Okay, yes, once he does get the actual permit, does he have to like come in and kind of provide like standard updates on how the property is going and make sure he's on pace for that 60-day extension?
I'm sorry.
There's no work being done, the 60 days is just gonna fly by. So I was asking, you know, could he come in or should he come in and make progress reports on what he's doing, during that timeframe?
Absolutely. We, we would encourage him to do that. We need to, we need to know that it's moving, because it hasn't been moving the last few years. I mean, we've been out there multiple times, and yes, he's taken down some things, but it, it has been painstakingly slow.
Thank you, I get that.
Who do I speak to directly?
Okay, Mr., one second, I'm gonna, Mr. Esprit?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna give you 60 days.
Okay.
And this is one of those help us, help you things.
Okay.
Okay? And the, the, it would behoove you to contact us and, and, and give us updates.
Understood.
I'm not gonna send these people out here checking on you.
Right.
But you'll get with Mr. Robinson, and, and y'all can get a plan going forward.
Yes, sir.
And 60 days.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That item has been deferred.
I'll restate my motion on 1M, move to condemn.
Okay, so 787 Majestic Oak Drive, 1M, Mr. Andropont moved and Mr. Markentale seconds. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 1N, 701 Conrad Lane, Westlake. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Ms. Eason. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 1O?
Moved to condemn.
3322 Westwood Road, Westlake. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 1P, 415 Prater Road, Mossville.
Moved to condemn.
Motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Markentale, and we've got a motion. Okay, and then, any questions?
There's a staff recommendation, Mr. President?
Uh, it's a, it's a page break.
I didn't see that.
It's not bad, there's a page break.
Moved to defer for 30 days.
All right, go back to that. 415 Prater Road, we're gonna take a motion by Mr. Burley to defer for 30 days, rather than condemn, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. All right. Item 2C, adopt ordinances associated with the adjudicated property sale conducted on April 29th, 2025.
Move on 2C.
Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Ms. Eason. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. Item 3A, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract for the intersection improvements at John Stein Road with Sampson Street slash Westwood Road slash 378 Project. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Guillory. Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 3B, adopt a resolution approving an active sale for the Belfield Ditch multi-road crossing replacement project. Motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. 3C, adopt a resolution approving a permanent utility servitude agreement for the East Couchy Parish Consolidated Waterworks Project. Motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Landry. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 3D, adopt a resolution approving the exappropriation of property for the East Couchy Parish Consolidated Waterworks Project. Motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Hayes. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 3E, adopt a resolution approving an active sale agreement for the Big Woods Stark's Bridge Replacement Project. Got a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Bowers.
In the record, shout out, accuse myself on it.
Okay. And any questions on that? Any discussion? That item carries. 3F, adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for the Old Spanish Trail Waterline Project. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 3G?
Move on 3G. Second.
Adopt ordinances approving the purchases of the following properties through funding received from the FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Program. 1, 900 West Sale Road, Lake Charles, and 2, 400 East David Street, Iowa. Motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Landry. Any question? Any discussion? Item carries. 4A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated April 10, 2025. Motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Bowers. Any question? Any discussion? Item carries. 5A, adopt a resolution certifying that the Couchy Parish Police Jury Housing Choice Voucher Section 8 program is categorically excluded from activities as a tenant-based rental assistance program. Motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 5B, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of a proposal by the Human Services Department for one-stop operator for the American Job Center. Motion by Mr. Guillory, second by Mr. Bowers. Any questions? Discussion? That item carries. 5C, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of the certification package for the Workforce Development Board. Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 5D, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of the local regional combined workforce plan. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6A?
Move on 6A.
Second.
Approve payment of all current invoices. Motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Ms. Eason. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. 6B, adopt a resolution on bids for Forest Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. Staff recommends the lowest responsive bid of Hackley Enterprises in the amount of 500,000, 528,319 dollars and 21 cents be accepted. Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 7A, Ward 6 Fire Protection District, number 1, District 11. Ms. Sarah McDaniel has resigned.
Departed 30 days.
Motion to defer for 30 days and seconded by Mr. Stelly. Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 7B, Industrial Development Board of Couchy Parish, Louisiana. Mr. Jeffrey W. Coats resignation. Mr. Andrew Pont would like to appoint Mr. Garrett Coats. So moved by him and seconded by Mr. Stelly. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. 7C, Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority of Louisiana. Couchy Shu Sabine Basin Representative, Mr. Abshar and Mr. Barti. We have submitted the name of Mr. David Reshore, got a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Barti. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. 8, it's board advise. 9, it's regular advise. 10, Mr. Hayes. Adopt a resolution of condolences to be forwards of the family of the late Alfred Anthony Palmer, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Palmer was born on November 9th, 1935. He's a 1960 graduate of the USL back then. He founded Alfred Palmer Incorporated in 1986. His proudest accomplishment was the construction of Lake Charles Regional Airport Terminal. Outside of his career, Mr. Palmer's life revolved around his family. He'll be deeply missed by all who knew him and loved him. The parish of Couchy has an outstanding, public-spirited individual. He also expanded his building in 2000 and was contractor on state-of-the-art forensic center and crime lab. It was my pleasure to work with him when I was with the school board, various repairs after hurricanes, et cetera. He always did what he promised to do in a timely manner, and he was a, he was a rock for Couchy Parish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.